Okay, okay, we've got a quorum. Can we continue? Okay, okay, I say let's continue with HR and then the other board members will come in. Javier?
Right, good evening again, President Shanklin, Dr. Goffin, Board of Trustees. The Human Resources Agenda starts on page 62 of Board Book. The first item is an information item, which is the Employee Handbook. I know that that was uploaded and shared with you. I'd like to ask if there's any questions that I could clarify on that.
If I could ask, I'm sorry, if I could ask everybody to mute their microphones? Thank you.
Okay, it looks like Dr. Garcia has a question.
Javier, I think it's still in your handbook on page 126. Does it go that far, your handbook?
The handbook itself or on the Board Book?
No, the handbook in the Board Book, page 126.
Yes, it does. It goes from page 65 to 136.
Okay, so on page 126, there's just a little typo or something is happening in blue there.
Uh huh. Can you tell me the header because I have a hard copy, which is the copy of the actual handbook itself, not the Board Book copy?
Page 61, Javier, I think.
Page 61, okay.
Yeah, it's your 61. It's in blue. Just the last five words of that sentence are odd. Just something's missing there. We don't have to spend time on it, just circle it or something and go back.
In of the same act? Yeah, in of the same act?
Yes, okay, I got that. I'll look at that and I'll get with Kay to make sure that it's accurate. Any other comments, questions about the employee handbook?
It doesn't appear to be, Javier.
Okay, so then the next board item, I have a presentation on the update of teacher incentive allotment in TTEST, so I will share my screen. So the purpose of this presentation is to give you an update regarding teacher incentive allotment, or as we're calling it, TIA, and TTEST from the May Board Meeting that I presented at. So I want to start with the recap, just to make sure that we're all on the same page regarding teacher incentive allotment. So as in May, I came with you and presented about teacher incentive allotment. I informed you that it is a key part of House Bill 3. The purpose of TIA, it's dedicated to recruiting, supporting, and retaining highly effective teachers in all schools, but with particular emphasis on the high need schools. And then in turn, it would have a positive impact on student achievement. Some of the things that we need to keep in mind for TIA are some requirements from the districts. So we are charged with developing a local teacher designation system that measures teacher effectiveness based on minimum teacher observation and student growth area. And so that's basically the teacher evaluation system, and I'll get into that in just a second. And then these systems must be submitted to the TA for approval because it undergoes a validation process so that they can say that it is aligned and it does qualify for TIA. Want to remind us, I did present this in May as well, that there are three teacher designations that come with funding. Teachers can be designated as recognized, exemplary, or master. And so again, just want to remind us that we are pursuing the teacher incentive allotment to continue to support not only our teachers, but to our students as well. And in doing so, it would access teacher incentive allotment funds, which would ensure that we're able to recruit high-quality teachers. And part of that is making sure that we have a robust teacher evaluation system that aligns. And so these seven main reasons are why we're pursuing a teacher incentive allotment, and I'll touch on these seven items in a couple of slides from here, but student achievement, teacher growth, teacher retention, equity and access, strengthening our evaluation system, making sure that we're competitive with teacher salaries and so that we're able to retain, and then definitely funding, which will help increase our teacher salaries. So want also to bring this slide up again, that I did present this in May. And so when you look at the teacher incentive allotment requirements, so if you look at the columns, the first two columns on the left, those are what's expected or the minimum requirements. And then we looked at INVEST and we looked at TTEST to see, do we meet the minimum requirements or do we need to do some adjustment? And so that was very telling to us when we did this work. Looking at how INVEST is today, there's quite a bit of adjustment or some work and some revision that would need to be done versus going with TTEST, the work has already been done, and so it would be a better option for us. And so I just wanted to remind us of that. So again, here's where I'll talk about those seven main factors on why we're pursuing teacher incentive allotment. So in May, I informed you all that the district had participated in the Texas Education Agency Task Force or the TEA, TIA Ed Task Force. And we had two executive directors on that task force, one from Human Resources, one from Finance Department. We had two principals, one elementary principal, one high school principal, and then we had two teachers from the district that participated in this task force through TA with others across the state. And there were several meetings that they attended and gave feedback for and so forth. Also, starting in January, January of 2020, we facilitated some INVEST task force meetings. In total, there was four, and the purpose of that was to determine if INVEST was aligned with the TIA requirements and getting feedback and making sure that we were hearing from different areas of stakeholders that were from INVEST. Then in February 2020, we also partnered with a consultant to assess INVEST and explore other teacher evaluation systems to see where we were and where we should go. And so I will say through the work of that INVEST task force and through the collaboration with the consultant, the following seven key points have been determined. That an updated evaluation system tied to student achievement, it would allow us to continue identifying areas of strengths and areas for improvement. That's in terms of student achievement. That TTEST coupled with TIA could provide an increasingly more accurate picture of teacher effectiveness and to drive improvement practices. It would also allow teacher retention. Equity and access, the data that we would be able to collect through the revised teacher evaluation process would ensure that we could match high-quality teachers with the most high-need campuses. Also strengthen the opportunity to best-in-class teacher evaluation system that improves teacher practice and qualifies the district for the TIA funding, leveraging funding to help us recruit, retain, and reward our high-performing teachers. Also making us competitive, transitioning to TTEST and meeting the requirements of TIA would allow our district to remain competitive with local districts that are also seeking out TIA funding. And I do want to point out that we have applied to be Cohort D, which is three years from now where we would start receiving the funding, but it's a process for us to get validated and approved. But there are some districts and some surrounding districts that are Cohort A, that this is the first year that they're participating in the funding, and so we're going to need to start competing with those districts in terms of recruiting and retaining teachers because they're able to give their teachers designations, which brings more funding. And then the last I end with funding, that it would allow us to unlock those fundings. So at the end of all this, and working with the INVEST task force and working with consultant, it was determined that we would be moving forward in transitioning from INVEST to TTEST. And for that reason, we do need to put in our final application by April 2021, and in doing so, we are piloting five of our campuses with TTEST this current school year. And so the design process, so it's some of the work that we've been doing since we've last met in May about this was, so it's designed for three components. We have a design committee, then we have a teacher evaluation executive committee, and then at the very end, we would codify and implement. And so I'll talk briefly about the design committee and teacher evaluation executive committee on the next slide, but before I talk of who's on those committees, want to inform you that on the design committee, it's basically they meet and it leads the design and planning of the teacher evaluation system. They do some research, they look at other evaluation systems, not only in the Texas area, but across the nation, to see what's best practice, what's working. They're seeking community input. And then from there, that design committee takes recommendations to the teacher evaluation executive committee, which considers their recommendations and basically says, yes, we think that's on target, or no, it's not, or we want some information. And at the end of that, we would codify it and implement it. So I talked about the design and executive committees. So if you look here on the left, our design committee is made up of campus leaders, school assistant superintendents, we have people from Central Office and other departments, and then of course, our HR department. And then our executive committee, again, different people, but we have campus leaders, we have all of our school assistant superintendents on that committee, and actually all of our assistant superintendents from Central Office. We've added some chiefs, some executive directors, and then of course, from HR, I was added to that along with Dr., or I guess, no, I was the only one added to that. So with that being said, what actually happens in these meetings? And so just wanted to briefly inform you that at the design session meeting structure, they've actually met six times since May to do some work. There's pre-work involved where everyone's researching best practices, looking at measurements, they're benchmarking from other peers. Examples are Dallas Independent School District, Denver Public Schools. They're discussing questions like, how would this work for Aldine? What would that look like? One of the main key decision points at this point that we're working through in transitioning over to TTEST and making sure that it aligns with TIA is what are our observations going to look like in terms of formal versus informal? And so there was three options that were thrown out there. Option one was the, okay, we'll have a one formal observation, which is 45 minutes, and then four formal walkthroughs, and then unlimited informal observations. Or do we want to do option two, where that would be two 45-minute formal observations and two formal walkthroughs, and again, unlimited informal observations? Or do we want to go with option three, which would be a one 45-minute formal observation, and then six walkthroughs? And I will say there's lots of dialogue about that. However, then, so a recommendation was made, and from that recommendation, then there was the executive committee meeting, which this was brought forward. And so actually, I jumped the gun, I'll show that on the next slide. So also part of the design session, from the conversations of these different options, and here again, I show the three options, but if you look on the left-hand side, the design committee, they reviewed 30, as I mentioned earlier, they met six times, but they reviewed 32 recommendations in terms of looking at the evaluation system moving forward. Six of those areas dealt with system goals, five of those dealt with stakeholder engagement, 10 were regarding teacher observation, four with student participation surveys, and then seven of those things were student learning objectives. And so they gathered all this information or these facts, and then they brought forward to the executive committee, I believe it was last week. And so what they brought forward was, this is what we've been doing, we are needing to know, do you approve this? Do you approve this additional information requested? Or do we just need to revisit this altogether and go back to the drawing board? And so basically, their recommendation was that we have a one 45-minute formal observation and four walkthroughs, and of course, unlimited informal observations. And then the rationale, that they believed that four walkthroughs would provide sufficient amount of feedback to teachers throughout the year, and the design committee would like to revisit the number of observations high-quality teachers receive and how to differentiate these requirements across teacher efficacy groups. Meaning that as teachers prove year after year, whatever the highest rating it is, we'll use highly effective for now, is it that they have to be evaluated every year? And so that's something that we are revisiting, but it has been recommended that we only have one 45-minute formal observation and four walkthroughs. And so from there, there's also been some stakeholder feedback. So there's been a teacher-focused group since we last met about this in May. So on June 7th, there was 37 participants, which included teachers, specialists, school leaders, and there were some key questions asked, like how satisfied are you with INVEST as it is? How satisfied are you with it? But the process of the evaluation, does it need improvement? Or are you not satisfied with it at all? Have you ever evaluated using another evaluation system? We wanted to see, has anyone worked with anything different or anything else? And then, would you like to write your own SLOs? And so that's a huge topic right now with the student learning objectives. And so the data gathered from that, of the 37 participants, only 21% were satisfied with INVEST as it is today. Almost 80% of the participants agreed that the process of evaluation needed some improvement. And I showed you that it did not align with TIA either. Other work in May and June for stakeholder engagement, there was in partnership with the evaluation team. So we're calling it Evaluation Team now instead of Invest Team as we're transitioning to TTEST. They hosted a group of over 35 teachers and school leaders. There was a survey shared with Central Office on how to expand the design committee. We didn't tell people you had to be on this committee because we wanted people to want to be on the committee so that they're invested in the work. And so that's why that survey went out, and we were able to get our large number of people who wanted to participate in being in the design committee. There was a district-wide survey to collect teacher feedback, and then based on the TIA TTEST requirements, identified additional stakeholder groups for feedback and discussion. And then in July and through now, we've shared updates with the principals at the principals' meeting. Assistant principals happened to attend that one as well, about our exploration of TTEST. We also identified the five campuses that are going to do the pilot campuses for TTEST this year, and we're planning to launch an engagement with staff about TIA and TTEST requirements. And we're going to continue to prepare for a wide-scale engagement because we know that it's going to take all this school year to prepare for next school year so we can launch TTEST district-wide. On the planning and implementation part, again, we've established the design committee, they've hosted two design sessions focused on system goals, stakeholder engagement in partnership with the evaluation team and design committee designing components of the pilot. Again, we identified five campuses that are going to be doing our pilot. In July and August, they held about three so far, I believe there's one more committee session that's happening. We've already had an executive design session to codify the proposal, we will have another one next week, a week from today, actually. And then we're going to support the evaluation team with TTEST training throughout the year to making sure that we have everyone certified so that in turn, we could train teachers. And then we're going to work with the district-level experts to discuss SLO development and assessments. And I will say that was one of the biggest a-halves for us, was that we really needed to focus and put forth deliberate and intentional effort on developing SLOs for moving forward with TTEST. So at this time, I'll open up to any questions you have regarding TIA or TTEST.
Dr. Garcia?
Yes, Javier, so this is in development, but what are we using this year for teachers?
So we're still having INVEST, except for at those five campuses that are piloting TTEST.
Okay, good, all right. And so you're going to continue to add, I noticed that all of those teams that you mentioned, and you had listed the members of those teams, did not include teachers. You did survey teachers and included their feedback. I was just wondering if there was a prohibition by the state to not include teachers in those design and whatever the names of the teams were? All of those teams?
No, there's not a prohibition. And the reason for that was because we did this work since May, and so a lot of the teachers were off-contract, and so we didn't get a lot of teachers that wanted to participate. But part of, one of the, let me see if I have that in the slide, some of the feedback that's going to come forward, the stakeholder engagement, is now that the teachers are back, we are going to engage our teachers more to get most of their feedback and how to move forward.
Okay, good. That would be, I would think that would make it richer. I mean, to have the end person, the other ones being evaluated, and obviously, you can go through and select those that are representative of the teachers in whatever existing groups there are. I think that would enrich the conversation and development of the plan. I'm glad that we're going to go ahead and go forward, but I do want us, I suppose to understand that we are going to have to be aware that as the new legislative session begins in January, legislators are going to have huge, huge economic issues to deal with, and I would not be surprised at all if some funding elements that TA has proposed are put on the back burner in the future. So I wouldn't be surprised at all because this is additional money, additional funding, incentive pay that, we can develop the plan, but I would be very surprised if in fact it does come to pass, given all of the funding that the legislators are going to have to consider. Just a word of caution, I suppose, for us to be aware of that in the background.
And that has been discussed before, and so we are aware that we need to keep an eye on that.
Rose? Ms. Avalos?
Yes, I just wanted to ask, was this the incentive plan that we talked about before that runs consecutively for a couple of years, based on one year's recognition?
Yes, let me clarify that, and I'm glad you asked that question because I typed that in my notes, but I didn't follow my script when I was presenting. So the question has come up, so when a teacher receives a designation, the designation is for five years. And so that designation goes with the teacher, whether they stay in Aldine or whether they jump ship and go to another district, that designation along with the funding that goes along with that designation go with the teacher. And so we are not able to lower a designation within five years as of today, as of today. However, like let's say they're the master, they're at the very top, you can't lower them. I know recognized as one, sorry, I should have had these memorized, but you can't lower them one, but you can elevate them. So master's the top one, and then exemplary is the one right below. And so they have the designation for five years. That question has been brought up, and I took it forward to the team, and when they're meeting with, there's meetings throughout Region 4 and in the Austin area about it. And so, and actually, looking for my notes, it says that they, what happens if a teacher, as of today, the designation cannot be taken away. We are told that a very high bar is set to get a designation. Districts are not allowed to lower designations within five years. However, districts are allowed to request a teacher's designation be higher each year. And so what Dallas ISD, because you asked, just based on one year. And so that's something that the design committee is in discussion right now, is do we just do it based on one year? Or what are other districts doing? And so I think the beauty of not being Cohort A, which is already in place and they're evaluating this school year, is that we can learn from other districts. Like Dallas ISD is part of Cohort A, and they had two years' worth of data to give them the designation so that it could alleviate any of those anomalies. And so so far, that's the only district that I've been made aware of. However, we have feelers out there to find that out because I did express, or asked that question after you expressed it last time.
Okay, good, because I have a concern that two years down the road, the teacher decides, I'm not performing, or I'm not going to do 100%, but they have nothing to lose.
Correct.
So I'm glad we're going to get a chance to see how that develops through the years before we sign on to it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Javier. Should we, you have anything else?
I have one. Okay, so my next item is the employee exit survey. So let me, I have a quick presentation for that as well, and I promise no more presentations from me after this for tonight. So, you know, at last month's board meeting, we touched base on the topic of employee exit surveys, and I stated that I would bring this month to you. So for this evening, I'm going to present just a brief overview of the employee exit survey, which consists of how we are looking at the data. I want to make note that if you see at the top of the presentation, you see where it says draft or discussion only. And the reason for that is because this is not the final report. We've consulted and contracted, excuse me, with K-12 Insight, who gathers the data for us and breaks it apart and disaggregates it and so forth. And so one of the things that we agreed upon with K-12 Insight is we needed a consistent window of when we start gathering the information. And so we had decided, because this didn't launch until May the 7th that we got the new survey up, we said, well, let's go through the peak hiring season and the peak season where employees are resigning and moving districts and so forth. And so it may sound funny, but August 31st is actually the date that we ended up on because as, although we know July is, the first week of July is the deadline to resign without being released from your contract, there's things that happen since then where people may get promoted in another district, or there's people that come back and they decide, you know what, I'm going to go ahead and retire. I thought I could do another year or so forth. And so because of the process, it made better sense that we gather data all the way through August 31st. And so the final report, which we'll share with you once we get it, or the final information, the data, will be shared with you once we get that, will run all the way through August 31st. But for today, it only runs through August 2nd so that we were able to pull the information to get you a report. And I share that with you because moving forward, it's going to be from September 1 through August 31st, year to year, so we can compare apples to apples. Because what we've been seeing in the Human Capital Report in the years past is there's been some data being pulled in July from one report and then another report, and it was just hand calculations and it causes human error and so forth. And so to make sure And so to make sure that it's consistent and that we get actual or accurate data, we've decided to go from September 1 through August 31st. And so I share that also because typically you're used to getting the Human Capital Report in September. More than likely, it's going to be in October this year because we're going to wait for all this information to gather. I also, as we go through this, want to also let you know that because it's still open through August 31st, the researcher for K-12 Insight has not synthesized all the open-ended questions where she could theme, you know, there's an open-ended question, just to say whatever you want on why you're leaving. The reason that she did not gather any of that for this presentation is because it could change overnight in terms of themes depending on percentages. And so I know that's, that's been asked for, or we have it, it's just because it's still open. It's not been synthesized yet, but it will be in the final report. So with that being said, I just want to do a quick overview of the new exit survey. Basically, it asked, you know, these three questions. Why, you know, were they leaving the district? And what was their level of satisfaction with working conditions while in the district? And their overall experience with the district? Of course, we're going to use these results to help revise protocols, practices, any programs to increase staff recruitment and retention. K-12 just didn't develop this exit survey themselves. They partnered with us in HR to develop, you know, what types of questions. Of course, this is something that they do and they have banks of questions, but what fit for Alden? And so looking at that, you know, we were able to look at the position type and their years of service, their perception of the district and reasons of leaving. Again, I've already explained that this is only through August 2nd, but a final report will be through August 31st. And then also want to point out that we were able to translate it into Spanish, which had not been done in previous years. When we go through this, you'll understand that it summarizes the survey by position type, years of service, and net promoter score is still something we're working on. That's not in this report, but it's something that's, it's they're trying out new. But I will say that that's not in this report. It's important to know that the results do not reflect random sampling. Therefore, they should not be generalized to all the staff members who depart Alden ISD. Rather, these results reflect only the perceptions and opinions of who took the survey. Because again, it's not required, it's those if you choose to do that. Keep in mind that findings for each item in the report exclude participants who did not answer because some weren't required, they skipped the question. So that's why you may not see it consistent on the total number of answers. And you'll see in the charts and the graphs, data labels, that if they're less than 5%, they're not shown, or there's some that, that they may not total 100 due to rounding, or some that may be over 100 because they were able to choose multiple answers. So with that being said, in participation, so since May 7th through August the 2nd, we had 477 employees that exit the district. And of that, we got a whopping 320 responses, which is huge, it's 67%. That may not sound like a lot, but compared to on average 23, 22% in years past that would do the exit survey, we're very happy that we had that many participate. And as you can see here, it breaks it down by position type. Of the 300, and again, there was, there was 320 responses, but you can see only 312 actually put what their position was. Some, you know, it looks like eight people skipped that question. But of, of those that did, 74% were teachers, and then 9% were others. And the others included such as literacy coach, skills specialist, so forth. And so that's the breakdown of who filled out the exit survey.
Just a question, Javier?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, you're saying, as you can see, are you intending to share slides with us that we're not seeing? Or is it in the board book?
Are you able to see the presentation? I'm sorry.
No, are we? Do we have a presentation?
Yes, we do.
Oh, okay, okay, I'm sorry, okay, I see it now, sorry.
Okay, just want to make sure, but yes, both of my presentations will be shared. I'll email it immediately afterwards to Yolanda to share with you all. Okay? So years of service, this is very interesting. And it goes along, you know, as the research I've been saying, that, you know, we don't, if we don't retain teachers within the first five years, we tend to lose them, or teachers do leave. And so if you can see here, 69%, 69% of those who completed the survey had six or less years. And so, and then you'll see, or you'll see, so that means that those are the ones who, who left the district. And so the, the research shows that by year five is when most people leave. And you can see years four to six is our highest exiting of who answered the survey. And then it goes down from there. Overall satisfaction with Alden ISD, I think this is great to see that it asked, how satisfied were you as an employee? And we have 81% answered either satisfied or very satisfied. And then that's broken down even by position type. So by teacher, you know, there was the majority of teachers. You can see also, you know, the majority of all three of these. But, but you can see the teacher had more of the ones that were dissatisfied or in the yellow versus campus paraprofessional or campus professional. And then I want to keep in mind, it was these three groups that you'll see the number of participants. And the footnote that only the positions with at least 10 participants were included because that goes, making sure that it's statistically sound. Also, not only by their position, but by their over years, years of service that we're breaking it down by. And you can see here, you know, it starts with one year or less. But again, six years or less are the ones where you see where they're the major, not the majority, where they have more of the dissatisfied compared to everyone else. And so you won't see years 16 through 19, or 16 through 20, because there was less than 10 participants, and that's on a footnote. I wanted to make sure to point that out. But as you can see here, if we can retain them after year six, more likely they're, they're going to stay, or the longevity extends in the district. Then we asked, you know, what are primary reasons? And so these were the 14 reasons. And you can see that, you know, it starts at the highest at the, at the top, but the other, which will be synthesized more closely in the final report. But again, because not all answers were submitted since we're going through August 31st. But you can see that 38% was our highest because they're getting employment in a similar capacity in another school district, and then relocation. Then it's also broken down, and I do want to say this is just a sample because this slide right here, and I'm going to go back to the one I just showed, these are the 14 primary reasons. And then they break down those 14 primary reasons. Right here, I believe there's only seven of those on the screen, or eight, I'm sorry. But they break it down by, the teacher is the, the blue, or the campus paraprofessional is the green. So not only can you see it by the reason, but we break it down and we start looking at it. Is, is there one reason that's more prominent or dominant for a particular job position and so forth? And so again, this was just a draft. We, in the final report, we'll see all 14 of them outlined this way. I just wanted to show what it would look like. Then it's also broken down by other reasons impacting resignation. Here's another 14 reasons, the top one is distance, stress, burnout. Other is actually the second. The other, they get to type out what it is. And what's so far, that the top themes would be relocation, promotion, opportunity for professional growth. This too, was going to be broken down by position type. Again, this is just a sample, it doesn't have all 14, it just has the seven or the eight of those. But it's broken down by the position type. And then it's broken down by years of service. And so again, this shows eight of them, the other six will be on the final report. But you can see this kind of is, if you just look at the colors and you look to see, is there a color that stands out more than others? So for example, like stress and burnout, that orange, you know, it stands out more than the others. So you look at stress and burnout, and you see the teachers that are, that have seven to 10 years' experience, they, they were burnt out. And so that's why they, that was one of the reasons that impacted their, their decision. Or something else that stands out, so if you go to no opportunity for promotion or transfer or reassignment, again, the orange and then the gray, which is more than 20 years, were anomalies, they were quite different than the others. And so it's broken down that way as well for us to, to decipher and synthesize. And then we asked the question, you know, what attracted, this was for those that were going to another district. And so that's why not everybody who exited was going, as we know, to another district. Some retired, some just chose a different career path. So 118 answered this. And so you'll see that the top two choices was school leadership and opportunities for career advancement. And so in looking at those, when they say school leadership, they were probably recruited. Someone is a principal or, or a district leader in another district. And so they recruited them to be part of the team. Opportunities for career advancement, you know, some people get impatient. And, and so they want that advancement, so they went to another district. Other, looking, that they synthesized that so far, it looks like, and that's at the very bottom, that's 27%, but the majority of other, but, you know, moving closer to home. We also asked the question, if the opportunity presented itself, would you work for Alden ISD again? And so 74% of those exiting said yes, or probably would consider, definitely would consider. And so that, that was promising as well. The work sites with the most exits, and again, this, what, these percentages aren't the percentages of their staff, this is the percentage of the overall people who exited. So in this case, like at Eisenhower High School, 5%, so it'd be 5% of the 264. And so this is our top 10 list. There's 11 because MacArthur at the bottom and Raymond Elementary tied for 10th place. However, we also know, looking at it, 2% at MacArthur High School is going to look a lot different than 2% at Raymond Elementary and have a different impact. And so however, this is data that we're able to gather and look at. The question was the type of teaching position. Now note here that if you add up all those percentages, it will be over 100% because you could be a high school teacher, and you could also say you're a science teacher, and you teach GT or, sorry, or AP or pre-AP. So they got to choose multiple ones of these. However, it's, looking at this, you can see that most of the teachers that exited, or not most, the majority of the teachers that exited at elementary compared to, to middle and in high school. But we also need to keep an eye, like, look at, you know, what I was attracted to when I looked at this, I wanted to see our bilingual because those, you know, and our ESL in pre-K. And so happy to say that although it's 7%, it's not in the teens. And so that's something that we need to celebrate and then figure out how to get those numbers smaller. In terms of campus paraprofessional, it broke it down, that was almost even, there was no alarming here. The instructional aides versus clerical staff that left. And then support positions, again, only 15 answered this. But you can see here, this ranges from nurses to counselors to, you know, our special service providers to our skills specialists, instructional coaches. So in summary, just of everything that I went through quickly today, you know, we know 81% of, of the participating exiting employees were satisfied or satisfied as an employee while they were in Alden ISD. 89% of that 81 were campus paraprofessionals. 87% of that 81 were campus professionals. And then 80% were teachers of that 80, 81%. By years of service, we broke it down of those, you know, that, that were leaving, 94% were years 11 through 15, and then you can see those, those numbers there. Want to point out that the majority of participants had six years or less with Alden ISD, which was 69%, and were teachers, were 74%. And again, this goes to the research that we've been saying that you need to capitalize on making sure that you are retaining your teachers within the first five years. Because if you can keep them after year five, more than likely they're willing to, to, their longevity is expanded. Top three reasons, as I stated, 38% was because they're going to another school district in a similar capacity, 17% due to relocation. And then 11% were, they were moving on to a different capacity in another district. And then the top three reasons that contributed was 39% was because of distance, 27 because of stress or burnout, 22% because of negative work environment. And then the top three factors reported as why they wanted to go to work in another district or why they were going to, we had a tie for the, the top two. School leadership, as I've already discussed, opportunities for advancement in another district, and then school work and location, school or work location, working conditions. And then 74% of the participants said they definitely would consider or probably would consider working for Alden again. And of that 74%, the majority were campus paraprofessionals. And then 87% of those were employees in year, year seven to 10, years of service. So at this time, I'll open it up to, to any questions.
Thank you, Garcia.
Javier, could you go to the slide before the last, before the thank you? Okay, is it clear enough to the, to the participant taking the survey? When I look at the first bullet, school leadership, are they saying that they're leaving to another district? Because, I mean, is it spelled out that I prefer the school leadership in the school that I'm going to? Or I am not happy with the school leadership of the school that I'm leaving? Is it, is it spelled out in some way so that they're?
Yeah, they're, they're, sorry to cut you off, I'm sorry. They are going to work for that school, they prefer the other school leadership.
So when they answer it, it's clear enough for them? It's explicit enough in whatever they're responding to that that's what it means?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And the same for, the same for the third bullet, school, work, location, working conditions? In other words, the reference in the specific question is, working conditions are better at the place that I'm going to?
Correct, according to what they, they put in the survey.
Okay, so these are not the, the, the open-ended questions, right? These are the specifics stated?
Correct, the, the open-ended questions will come with the final report because it's open until August 31st, and then they'll get the themes. You know, they'll decipher that or synthesize it and get things.
All good information that should help you and your team, thank you.
Yes, and I mean, like I said, I'm happy about the participation rate. It's a lot higher than it has been in the past.
Thank you, Javier.
Okay.
Moving on to Dr. Stevens?
I got some more board items real quick, just unless y'all, I just want to make sure I go through, through my agenda. So the next one is the Hum, the Monthly Human Resources Personnel Report, which is on page 141. On there, I'm not sure if you have any questions, but there's 50 people since last month who've resigned. There are six people that retired, and we would like to express our sympathy to the family of Kendall Graham. Ms. Graham was an employee at Lewis Middle School at the time of her death, which was on July the 4th. We also like to express our sympathy to the family of Craig Gant. Mr. Gant was an employee at Hoffman Middle School at the time of his death on July the 20th. Are there any questions regarding the Monthly Resources Personnel Report?
No hands raised, Javier.
Okay, the next one is the vacancy list. I do want to say that we are down to 99. Okay, the next one is the vacancy list. I do want to say that we are down to 99 vacancies, which we surveyed, and it's been the lowest at the beginning of the year. And at least this the past four years, this has been the lowest. And so it's due to not only the HR team, but also, like I said, the leaders at the campuses, recruiting and hiring. Last year, uh we were at 212 at this time, so we're down 54%. Also, I'm not sure if y'all noticed, but the vacancy list looks a little different. We've we've enhanced it, improved the formulas to to make it work more efficient for us. And it's and so is there any questions on the vacancy list?
You can continue.
Okay, so then the next one's on page 153 is the monthly personnel assignments and recommendations. Since last month, we've had 276 new hires. Okay, and the, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, yes, I just wanted to ask, uh is this the form that you used to use only for student teachers? And now you're using it for all new hires?
The monthly personnel assignments? No, ma'am, I mean, since I've been here, I've always used it for for all new hires.
Okay, I I guess I'm confused. So it, uh these are, some of them are experienced people. They're not brand-new teachers.
Correct. These are just new to Alden.
Okay, thank you.
Just included there, university, just so we would know for the new hires, is that what you added?
No, the uh that one hasn't changed, just the color change there. Uh we've always done the university because it's on part of the the human capital report that that is done yearly. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
The final reports on page 161, and that's our monthly staff assignments, which will be presented tomorrow, the with their picture and title. Are there any questions regarding staff assignments?
No, go ahead.
Then that concludes it for me, President Shanklin. Thank you.
President Shanklin, would you like for me to proceed?
Mr. Mead has a question first.
I just want to make a notation that Mr. Mead or Mead School is spelled M-E-A-D.
Okay.
I apologize for that. I will. Is it everywhere that way? It should be corrected.
There's two couple of places that that it added to it.
Okay, I apologize.
That's okay.
And Dr. Garcia again.
Uh Javier, I don't know, on page, I'm looking at page 162, there is an associate principal at Nimitz. I don't know that I've ever seen, other than assistant principal or principal of curriculum, assistant principal of curriculum, there is an associate. Is is Nimitz, is that unique to Nimitz, or do we have others that are associate?
Dr. Garcia, it's unique to Nimitz. Uh we just hired a new principal, and I realize I did our follow-up today, and that's to one of the things I left off, I share with everyone else, the excitement about uh new principal. She, Ms. Ainsley, has been the freshman principal at the ninth grade center. And so she knows two of the grades, the class of 2022 and the class of 2023. And so she was recently named principal of the senior campus. And for the remainder for this year, what we're going to do is look at how that campus is structured, and she was excited to take on some additional responsibility in line nine through 12. And so um while she'll be serving as a principal of both campuses, she'll have associates there, and we're going to look at and evaluate this year and 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 share out. So it's 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 only for uh for Nimitz.
So is this person that is, I'm confused now, is this person that is the associate principal the head person or the second person in command? I didn't understand what you were saying.
So Ms. Ainsley, who's been the system, the principal of the ninth grade center, she'll serve as the principal of both campuses and have an associate at um both campuses. So she will have one principal and two associates for this year. The timing was perfect, the opportunity was perfect, and we're going to evaluate and see how how it goes. Both campuses, they're excited about it, and that way we we're fully staffed and ready to move forward.
So are they are the, so there will be an associate at Nimitz and an associate at Nimitz 9? Is that what you're saying? Okay, so is there a differentiation in pay? Are they getting principal pay or lesser than principal pay?
They're not getting principals pay. It's less than principals pay. So it's probably the equivalent of what they call the curriculum principal. While she's on one campus, the proximity is great, but while she's at one, the associate would be in charge. And while she's at the other one, the the associate would be in charge. Yes, incorrect. But no, they're not getting principals pay, no, ma'am.
And so do they each also have uh curriculum principals?
No, ma'am.
They do not have curriculum people at their building, at each of those separate buildings?
No, no, ma'am. Uh-uh. So.
Is the associate the curriculum principal?
Yes, ma'am. And they took on the roles of curriculum uh assistant principal plus additional.
All right, that's just new. I didn't. But it is new. It's the first time we've done this.
And we're gonna evaluate and see how it goes at at Nimitz. And it's, Nimitz is the only opportunity because of the proximity and because of it's just a special situation that the current principal who was selected for the senior high had been the principal of the ninth grade center and already has a relationship with many of those students. But she doesn't have the numbers that MacArthur has, Eisenhower and others. And so um we're pretty excited about um the continuity of of learning from nine through 12.
Okay, so they're not the, they used to be the the largest enrollment school. Nimitz is no longer. They're about third now, is that what you're saying?
Uh Katie, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're third.
Yes, I had a total enrollment at both campuses is about 2,500. It's, I I believe, I I want to say four, uh but it's very, very close to Eisenhower's total.
Rose?
Yes, uh Dr. Goffney, where I understand you want to try this, but you know, I've been there. It's a high school principal's job is a tremendous job. I just find it difficult, I guess, to uh to envision being responsible for two campuses and two sets of staff. I just think that we need to be careful. We need to monitor this. We don't want to burn our principals out. You know, it it's it's just a big job. And if we expect performance from the kids and therefore performance from the teachers, it's something that we really need to be careful about. Now, um you had mentioned to me about having Nancy Blackwell come back. Now, is that gonna be a temporary, is that gonna be a temporary situation at Nimitz 9? Or are we gonna hire an assistant principal to replace her?
I can, if I may speak to that, Nancy Blackwell has been brought on during the transition for the next approximately 30 days. She's assisting with Nimitz 9 as Ms. Adams is acclimating herself to the senior high school. And there is also a transition team that will be identified that is going to be working with the feeder schools and um staff from both campuses to discuss things like alignment, uh continuity of PLCs, of things like staffing, athletics, budget, et cetera, and opportunities that that are going to be really um pretty exciting for uh both campuses as we look at you know, strengthening the the partnership between the two.
Okay, I I can understand that that point, but you know, she's gonna have to deal with two sets of parents. I I can envision parents saying, I don't want to talk to the associate. I want to talk to the principal. You know, and I wish you're gonna do run back and forth. I mean, y'all are, y'all are gonna look at it, I know, but just be sure that you're careful. Okay.
Mrs. Sparta.
Well, I don't know all about the principalship and everything. What was the rationale for doing this, Dr. Goffney?
Well, it's an exciting opportunity, and it's amazing how the pendulum does swing in different areas. But the alignment of having a standalone ninth grade center, I recognize, and I've heard the the history of it, and certainly stand beside it for the rest of our 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 district, but the opportunity here, because the Nimitz ninth grade principal has been here for for two years. And I remember when the position first opened and uh Dr. Watson was promoted, Mr. Me reminded me that, you know, Nimitz 9 had a rough history, and we had to make sure that we had a very good principal. And so we were able to, we have a really good principal, and that's Dr. Ms. Ainsley. And uh it is a really good opportunity to look at ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade, and 12th grade, which a lot of districts have, a ninth through 12. Uh even when they have a ninth grade center, they have one principal for the alignment of expectations. I remember we came to you last, or we discussed last year that ninth grade stood alone. And so you had students who weren't successful in ninth grade, but it had to go on to the 10th grade to the the senior high and the ninth grade center didn't work well together like we really wanted them to work consistently. And so it's like continuity of learning. And then she's vision for it. And so uh we encourage uh our leaders to think differently. And um as she's thinking about that, her whole pathway, remember Ogden is one of our schools that hasn't been successful in the past, was rated an F. And we have uh this whole pathway over here on the north side is an opportunity. Remember, we don't have an A or a B rated school in this whole north side, other than Nimitz High School. And so looking at the alignment, it was a great opportunity with the person who served in the ninth grade center to just see what it could look like nine through 12. And I'm I'm probably not doing it any service because it's 10 o'clock. So Katie or Todd Lindman, I know y'all are on here. Do you want to kind of expound a little bit more?
Yeah, I think that this, uh we looked at best practices from around the state. I know Spring and several others um are using this type of model. Also, you know, I think that uh what what Dr. Goffney just said, as far as strengthening the feeder pattern, is what is also very exciting right now. Both campuses are, they're they're interested. They are thrilled about having Ms. Adams there. I know it's going to be a a big job. Uh she knows it's going to be a big job. But she also has a lot of support around her and has identified some very strong second-tier leaders that are going to be, we believe, it's an opportunity for them to strengthen their leadership skills as well, which we 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 definitely need in our secondary level.
Okay.
If if I could say one more thing, I'm sorry, um we also, last year, if you do remember, we did combine our accountability for our ninth and high schools. So they are under one um number, so they do share the same TEA accountability, our ninth and our senior high schools. Last year was going to be the first year that that happened, but as you know, we had a a disaster declaration. But currently, they are under one um TEA number.
Thank you, Katie. I think with that, we can move on to Dr. Stevens.
Thank you, President Shanklin, members of the board, Dr. Goffney. My agenda begins on page 164. And the first item I have tonight for consent is the standard check registers that we are requesting your approval of. Um the next line item is the approval of bids. There are four, I'm sorry, three bids there. We are asking to resend a bid award that occurred in June, at the June meeting. The vendor is unable to offer the price point that was awarded during that June session. So we are asking to resend um that award, and it was for Daxel, who provided gloves for child nutrition. They are unable to honor that price point, so we are requesting to award Labatt, who was, who had the next lowest price for disposable gloves. So that's why you see a rescinding and a um a new revised recommendation for um item C as it relates to bids. Are there any questions about any of the other bid items?
Mr. Mead has a question.
Yes, sir.
I was just wondering, uh since the price looks like it's doubled from what the the written was, would that not be a a time to go out and just rebid the whole thing to see if we get better prices? Since it's doubled?
If you um look at the different vendors, Mr. Me, there are what upwards of six that actually uh bid it for this particular line item, line item number 144. I mentioned earlier that the price of disposable gloves has increased dramatically. So we do think that um this is the best price point that we can get at this time, considering the climate that we are currently in. We also have uh reached out to other vendors to price match, Mr. Me, to see if this is, you know, anywhere near comparable. And based on that information, this does appear to be, at this moment in time, the best offer we can get. So even if we opened it back up for this one line item completely, we're going to yield a similar result is what we are anticipating um until this pandemic clears.
Okay, would you be giving them, how much, uh would they get an extra year on this on this bid?
No, they, we just awarded it in June, so this is, we we are rescinding it in August, and so we're not going to give an extra year. The, remember, the bids are co-terminals, so we're still gonna come back the next year at the same point in time. But they will be eligible um for an extension of the current agreement if we choose to extend that offer.
Okay, but the but after the pandemic is over, maybe the prices of gloves will go down again.
Yes.
And we could rebid it, yeah.
We could rebid it, absolutely. So that's something we are.
You have the option of giving them another year or not? You have that option?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Yes, sir. And then the next item for consent is the approval of contracts and purchases over 50,000, which is on page, page 188. If, are there any questions there?
Dr. Stevens, I did have one question in backup on page 168.
Yes, sir.
Those are real big ones. I'm just wondering, I just, what what are those two achieve for over a half million dollars? And edge edge uh edge worth, I'm not sure, for 318?
I'm getting there now. Let's see. Are you on the over 50K report?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, so on, it is the, so you asked about edgenuity?
Yes, and and achieve 3,000. One, one is 565,000, one and three, 318,000. I just wondered what they were.
Page 168. I'm on page, oh, I'm, I thought you said the over 50K list. I'm sorry. I went to page 188, so you're not on the over 50K. You're actually on a bid.
Page 168, I I apologize. I don't have the other notes with me here.
That's okay. I'll go to page 168. I apologize. Okay, so you're talking about instructional supplies and materials. So for achieve 3,000, Mr. Me, that 565,000, that is the amount that we have paid to that vendor for services performed during the 1920s school year. That is a vendor, um achieve 3,000, that's uh teaching and learning, instructional supplies and materials to support um the campuses. So that's the total spend. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Dr. Alfred Stevens, yes, achieve 3,000 is an online platform that we use in middle schools and high schools. It is part of our intervention classes, so specifically our reading lab classes um in those levels. And we have been utilizing And we have been utilizing it very successfully the last several years. Have a great, um, partnership, great support team, and, um, yes.
Okay, thank you.
The next item, after the contracts and purchases that are over 50,000, is this month's budget amendment. We are, remember, as campuses and departments submit requests to move funds across different functions, uh, we bring that information once a month for board approval. After the board approves, we then go back and modify their existing budgets. It is not an increase to the overall district's budget at all. It is simply, um, moving funds from one function to another as requested by the different department leaders. The next item is the approval of the monthly tax office refund. So any overpayments that were processed and the taxpayer has requested the refund, we are responsible for, for providing that overpayment. And then line item number six on the consent agenda is the ratification of the interlocal agreement of Operation Connectivity between Region Four and Alden. As I mentioned earlier, in our partnership with Operation Connectivity, uh, Region Four is hosting all of the, um, logistics and the behind-the-scenes works that are taking, that's taking place with the bulk order process. As a result, each of the different school districts have to, um, partner and go into an interlocal agreement. So we had to execute that agreement rather quickly. And so that's why we are requesting to ratify it for this month. Are there any questions about any other consent agenda items?
Doesn't appear to me.
If there are no questions, President Shanklin, the next item, the next five items on my agenda, or six items are for information only. Are there any questions about any of the standard reports under informational items? President Shanklin, if there are no questions, that concludes my part of the agenda this evening.
Okay, Dr. Stevens, I was reading something, is there an honor, um, that you've been awarded that you would like to tell us about?
Um, I haven't been awarded yet. Um, I am gonna complete the process, but yes, recently I was accepted into the, uh, AASAs.
You know, I'm at a, you know, I'm at a meeting, what's going on?
Dr. Goffney, you're not muted.
So, um, my counterpart, also Dr. Villarreal, as you know, he was accepted into, um, Dr. V, would you like to speak to that academy as well? So both of us are honored to be able to, uh, serve in this way and to continue learning and growing, and, and of course, bring all of that great knowledge back and share with you all. So we're excited about this opportunity, and, um, thank you for recognizing that we are going to be a part of two premier, um, superintendent academies.
Congratulations to both of you.
Thank you.
Uh, Adrian.
Great, thank you. Um, for President Shanklin, board members, and Dr. Goffney, again, my name is Adrian Mustios, the Chief Transformation Officer. Uh, my board items begin on page 245. Um, the first thing I will speak about again is the approval of the board additional four-week extension for remote learning that we shared about in the COVID updates. Uh, are there any questions on that?
Continue, please.
Great, uh, and moving on here, I, I wanna speak about the additional day school year, uh, planning, uh, grant that was awarded to all deans of the Texas Education Agency to redesign the school calendar to address summer learning loss and now COVID loss. Um, that'll help teachers and students grow and learn through this opportunity. Uh, so I just wanted to share with you, I've been sharing with you within the board communication about this new opportunity that we've just launched here in Alden, and there's gonna be a short presentation, uh, if they can pull that up to go over real quick. And as they pull it up, I'll, I'll start talking about what this additional day school year initiative addresses, which again, it's summer loss, which can have a profound effect on students from low-income backgrounds. And, uh, this impact of summer learning loss has been shown to create a gap of up to three grade, grade levels for low-income students by fifth grade. Uh, so research has also shown the impact of summer learning loss. Can it be eliminated if academic instruction is offered for three to four hours a day for five to six weeks? Additionally, when we're comparing students in the U.S. to those top-performing countries uh, and programs for issue, uh, for student assessment exams, we see that many of the countries have shorter summer breaks and all have more instructional days per year. So this suggests that holding more instructional days leads to academic achievement. However, lengthening the instructional year has not previously been possible in Texas with existing funding structures. So there is a solution, uh, to this, as we would take this whole school year to plan and design, uh, a process here. So with the passage of House Bill Three, uh, there is now added half-day formula funding for school systems that add instructional days to any of their elementary schools starting in the 2020, 2021 school year. So this, uh, this funding is available for those school calendars that go beyond the minimum of 180 days, up to 210 days, specifically for grades pre-K through five. Now, TA has identified some routes to take. Um, as you can see here, to currently, our Alden calendar serves 174 calendar days. And as we applied for this opportunity, we'll be focusing and working with two schools, uh, Vine's Primary and Ermo Elementary. Uh, and the rationale how it was Vine's students go into Ermo Elementary School. And as we're expanding and launching our dual-language program, uh, we hope this will work and support our students' growth as well in the dual-language program, but also to give other families more choices as they select and send their students to school. Uh, so the course of action, uh, we're looking up to do here is a full redesign, uh, which would be a 210-day calendar, uh, where the daily teacher and student experience would, would be different than other Alden campuses. Uh, for teachers, this would include a daily schedule change, uh, for instructional time to provide more in daily planning for teachers with breaks. And for students, the daily schedule would include more enrichment activities and student brain breaks, uh, to have these changes, to add additional instructional minutes, to offer an additional day to the calendar year. Uh, if we can go to the next slide. Uh, so what does that mean here, as we look at clarified minutes? Right now, currently, um, the school minutes are 75,600 minutes, but with the additional day, um, planning opportunity, we would still have to hit the number of minutes, plus a minimum of 180 to 210 days, uh, for this. So we'd have to hit both minutes plus the dates. Uh, if we can go to the next slide. Uh, and as we go through this school year, the participants and each, each cohort will go through a one-year minimum extensive planning phase, which starts now. Um, we started this phase, uh, we did a kickoff in July, uh, with a steering committee, and this one-year planning would be followed by three-year, um, execution phase, where we'd be able to require to fulfill a set of annual evidence-based performance metrics, uh, to show proof to the state and to the community and to the board, uh, that this is, um, something viable moving forward as we see the indexes change. So as we look at this support system, uh, we need to reimagine how that school day looks, uh, given the COVID situation as well. This is a great opportunity to pilot and learn and see if there's any new of these school day calendars that help replicate in our pre-K five settings. Um, so this is something that we'd be looking to address and learn about this school year, is adding additional recess, uh, also adding special electives. They may be fine arts courses, they may be performing arts courses, they may be social-emotional learning courses, uh, anything to, to help stimulate and have enrichment for all students, rather than just pulling students that are advanced and students who need intervention do not usually get that opportunity. This would be an equal access for all students. Um, and as we look at the additional school days, uh, we're looking to develop something for 210 days. Uh, if we can move to the next slide. So what this looks like for the full re, full year redesign is, again, a 200-day program. Uh, we'd have to look at the master schedule to see what this looks like. Uh, and then the great thing about this is we would be able to jump-start the school year, uh, in July or early August, uh, to add days before. Uh, we want, the idea to do this before the start exam to give the students more opportunities to work with their teachers and learn and grow, uh, and then post after that with their support for students to keep building their enrichment. Uh, as we go through this side of it, it'd be full classroom of students. Uh, this 210-day track would be available. Uh, one of the caveats is the students will remain with the same teacher the entire school year. We didn't anticipate moving students throughout the year, to be one teacher to build with them and, and grow, uh, as we go forward in this design phase. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, so some of the actions we're looking at, and the benefits are to optimize students, to increase their planning for teachers and brain breaks, uh, um, for the students. Uh, this really means is build the professional learning communities where teachers have time to take deep dives into instructional practices, create model lessons with each other, and then also do the deep dive of data analysis where they can plan effectively for their students, uh, rather than doing quick, uh, before or after-school planning sessions, but also gives the students time to do some more enrichment and recesses throughout the day. Uh, and the target would be on math, reading, and writing as well. Uh, next slide. Uh, so this is what this would look like, year zero, uh, would be this school year. And this year zero is a strategic planning design process, uh, to paramount the success of the additional day school year implementation or execution. So this first cohort experience is supporting the districts in development of what our plan would look like. Uh, taking this to the TA, taking this to the school board. Uh, of course, the school board would have to approve, uh, the action to move forward in this process. And if you look at year one, it's broken down, or year zero, uh, planning part one is what we're in now, and planning part one is gonna be from July to December. We have to come up with a plan, uh, to move it, and then we'd have to bring it to the school board for approval. Uh, with approval from the board and the state with TA, the next flight phase would be planning part two, which would be from January to April, where we'd have to actually build an execution plan for these two campuses as well, and take it back to the school board, and then take it back to the state for the additional funding that would come on years, year one, two, and three of execution. Um, and there's about six bullets here that we can hit. As we build year one, year two, year, year three, we would look at, look at, um, the valuation of, of the documents. We would refine them each year, look at student attendance rates for those in the program, look at teacher and stakeholder satisfaction surveys. Uh, student growth is also big, let's look at the student growth over the time of an interim assessment, STAR data, or any of our K-two diagnostic systems. Uh, each year, the board would have to sign off on this calendar and plan, uh, and looking at our percent of daily teacher paying time, percent of enrichment time. All of that would be looked at as we phase this out. One of the goals would be to help replicate this in other schools, uh, when it's successful. So this is a quick overview of what the additional day school year is. Uh, I will keep you all updated as we go through the planning process, um, moving forward. Um, and at this time, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Adrian. Dr. Garcia.
Adrian, this sounds like an exci- exciting opportunity. Uh, do you have a sense right now, I know it's the first day of, of school, I, I was gonna ask about the rationale for selecting the two schools, but you gave us that. Uh, do we have a sense for the number of students enrolled in the dual-language program currently?
Yeah, this is- Yes, ma'am, this is, I believe, the first year in first grade. Uh, Katie, you can correct me if I'm wrong, this is the first year of launch, and also at, 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 uh, at the Vine's Primary School. So this is perfect timing because it's still new at the campuses. So only one grade level would be off that full year, but we know we're doing great things at those campuses. So we feel very confident that we can keep building it up over the extent, this, a 210-day calendar as well, so. Uh, and if you look at the school data, these schools are performing very, they're performing well, uh, but we wanna give that opportunity to it. So we look to transform or innovate campuses. We're not only gonna look at schools that may not be, be forming high, but giving that opportunity across the board to the district.
Okay, maybe I didn't make myself clear. I know that we had targets to reach in terms of student enrollment in the dual-language program. Do we know what the number enrolled is for this academic year? I, as I said, I know it's only the first day of classes.
I'd have to get that information for you, ma'am.
Yeah. Dr. Garcia, I'm not sure, I do know we have two classrooms at each campus, um, but I'm not sure right now as to the enrollment at either Vine's or at Ermo.
Because if it's gonna, if we're gonna target that population, if that's the criteria for selecting them, I would hope that we would have a good number of, of the students. And maybe not the target, because, given the circumstances, but at least somewhere, you know, a, a good number.
Yes, ma'am, we'll get you that information.
Okay, thank you, good job.
Thank you, Adrian.
Thank you.
Mr. Reed.
President Shanklin, Dr. uh, Goffney, other members of the board. I just have, uh, a few items on the agenda. Tape again, on page- Move my pen to 58, I believe. 258 is, uh, where the communications agenda begins. I'm actually gonna start at the bottom and come back to the naming update. Um, you'll notice that on 262, we have a quite, uh, a list of media, uh, mentions. And, um, I will tell you that over the last three weeks, uh, we, that number, um, of contacts continues to, um, increase. I believe this week alone, uh, Dr. Alfred Stevens has been recruited, uh, to do an interview. I'm wait, I'm working on Katie Rhodey next and, and Javier. Um, but I think it's a testament to what I started. Um, I remember sitting in the seat and saying, you know, my job was to make sure people heard our version of the story and allowed us to do that. So, um, I'm, I'm proud that we have lots of people who can tell the Alden story and can, um, help us get our message out to our stakeholders. I encourage you to continue to follow, um, along, and we'll continue to share the opportunities as they come up. I know today, we had, uh, a teacher from Hill, um, on Channel 11. She was talking about her at-home classroom, uh, very quickly was able to, you know, pivot and answer those questions. And then also, the principal, Ms. Faroy, um, at Simmons, also responded very quickly, uh, to do an interview about her opportunity. Um, and as Katie alluded to earlier this week in our Alden Cares 2.0, um, many of the stations have been interested in how we're going to re-engage our students because, as you know, uh, districts across the state lost contact with students, through social, through, um, uh, virtual learning. And so our plan of using our buses and going to, to, to where our students live is something that has intrigued the media outlets, so we'll be, uh, following. On, um, the next page, on page 260 are the recognitions. And I am happy that we're bringing them back, all of them. Um, unfortunately, we won't get to be in person, but we will start with the Leukemia Society. They have been on our list since May and really want to acknowledge our campuses for the work that they have done to raise money. And so, um, we've invited them to present and share. And then, uh, we are also going to acknowledge our Region Four Teacher of the Year publicly, and it's our official, um, our official acknowledgement of her. And then, um, our standard groups, um, business, uh, I'm sorry, uh, buildings and properties, transportation, child nutrition, and even the police department will make recognition. So we'll also have something from athletics. And then our friend Stacy with All the Money will also present and talk to us about the grants that have been, um, awarded during, uh, this time. So I'm excited to bring that back. And then, um, on the, on 259, I shared a little bit about, uh, a naming update. I know that, um, for several meetings, uh, it was due to you a list of some of the buildings that still had, had yet to be named. And so, if you don't mind, I'm gonna share my, um, screen. I will, I would like to publicly thank Abel and, uh, Patrick for working on this. Um, and, and note, I cannot see you guys anymore once I share my screen, but, uh, Mr. Garza and Patrick have tried to comb through the district and look at buildings and facilities that had yet to be named. Uh, we also talked about this in our executive leadership team meeting and identified that we could get quite exhaustive and, uh, go through everything from theaters to hallways to libraries. And so those are not, um, on this list. We went with the ones that were built recently or those that, um, were athletic facilities. Um, I'll also let you know that, um, some of the athletic facilities, while we know that they are not named, the condition of them, uh, we feel may not be aligned to something that you want to be named unless we were prepared to put, uh, some additional resources into, um, uh, into upkeep or re, um, re-envisioning them. Um, as you know, the new athletic complex at Davis High School, um, I think I saw pictures. It's coming along well, if it, if not complete. Uh, so the, the whole complex could be named, as well as the, the smaller, um, the smaller fields, like the base- as well as the smaller fields, like the baseball, softball, tennis. We still have the North and West Transportation Center. The Aldine Education Center is in blue because it was recently named. Greenspoint Elementary is named for the area. It could stand to be named. And then at Eisenhower, we have some courts and fields. And one of the things that I also want to scroll down is that all of our farms have not been named. So while FFA is a large draw to our community and to our district, our farms and the facilities where students raise their animal projects do not have names. And so that could be an opportunity for us to honor community members or others who have been stakeholders to the district. And then Cypresswood and Orange Grove also do not have a name. I will share this with Yolanda so that you have it on file, and we will continue to update it as we look, as we continue to look inside of our buildings and facilities, at the theaters or hallways or, you know, teaching theaters, any of those things that could be up for a naming opportunity. Any questions about the list?
I don't think we have a question about the list. I can remember on a prior board, there was resistance in renaming Greenspoint Elementary because of the reason. We can discuss that in board, but I think the priority would be the schools. We don't have to name everything now, but I would like the committee to look at the schools that are there and consider renaming a couple of those during this session.
Okay. So I'll make sure Yolanda has that update and so that the naming committee has as much information as they need and should they need anymore. Mr. Garza and Patrick and I can work to get that for you.
Okay. And also, try to funnel as much community input as possible to the board and to the committee so that we have a lot of community engagement in this process.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have one more piece of update related to the naming. As you know, last board meeting, it was officially named that the, announced that the AEC would take on Mr. Knipple's name and be named in his honor. And in thinking about how we could best do that, we would like to look at various ways of doing it as quickly as possible and not waiting until, you know, the whatever, whatever term we're in, COVID kind of period goes away. So what we're looking at is possibly doing a small version of a ceremony and then streaming where we could uncover the name, talk about a variety of ways. But what I believe we should do is get it named as quickly as possible so that we don't miss an opportunity and then do an honor he and his family. I know that the school has moved forward with considering themselves fully official, and so that you will hear many people call themselves the Knipple Center or Knipple Education Center, but the picture and the name, I think, really does put a nice O on top. And so would like to move forward in that way. We've talked to Patrick about the actual letters that match the wayfinding in the district, looked at how much those would cost and how long it would take to put those up. And then we've talked to, I've talked with my team about finding the best way to get as many people involved and visible from far and wide, but also remaining safe and socially distanced. I do know his wife has reached out to and wants to start talking about planning, and I just want to make sure that as we move forward, we're all on the same page with the idea of, you know, not belaboring it and making it official as soon as possible.
Looking to all that, thanks a lot. Mr. Mead.
Shaleah.
Yes, sir.
Since you're thinking about making some designs, would it be possible, before we just take something up, that the board could take a look at some of the things that you're going to be looking at before we just go do it?
Oh, you mean the name of the building?
Whatever you're going to do. Let the board take a look at it and see what the board thinks about it first before you make a final decision on it?
Yes, sir. I will make sure we bring it to the board.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Shaleah.
So, Shaleah, I think that Patrick would just design and then put the, because I think our lettering is standard, but then the where, so he can design that piece and so we can share that.
Yeah, we can have a couple renderings, whether it's across or double-stacked or however. Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Garcia.
I'm not sure if Mr. Mead intended for that, only that to be considered by the board or the planning that you talked about as well for the unveiling or the naming. I mean, I'm not sure if Mr. Mead just meant the signage. I think he, I would like the whole process of when and where to come before the board as well.
Okay.
I agree.
We know the where.
The how, the how and the when. Yes, ma'am. Is there a point of contact? I do know that there is a naming, you know, official committee. Should we work through the committee as opposed to the entire board?
No, it's not necessary to go to the committee. I don't think it is. Because the board is the one that ultimately decided on the name.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. This is Rose Avolos. Certainly, I would want his family to have some input on when this happens. And it's not been unusual for us to name a building, and it opens in, it opens in August, and we don't dedicate it till October, November. So, you know, months have passed. I mean, I don't see anything wrong with the name going on the building and having the dedication at a later point after we've, you know, considered what the family would really like and our schedule.
May I have the ability to contact his wife and move forward with kind of having a conversation about what we're thinking about and understanding her date and time and then bring that back? Okay. So that I don't wait until the next board meeting. I will put a small update in board communication so that we continue the process along the way.
And Ms. Avolos, I'm glad you mentioned that because in my mind, I was thinking the unveiling was a big deal as well, but apparently that is not a big deal.
No, not from my perspective, because we open a new building and the kids have to start school, and it's opened in July or August, and we don't have a dedication, just like Mr. Mead's. We don't have a dedication till months later.
I will find out from his family, and we will report back something so that we can basically honor him and make sure that their wishes are granted and that it's also done timely and also within cost.
Yeah. And I think if we decide to go ahead and change the name on the building to let his family know, because they might want to come at that point, just themselves, you know, just to see the name put on the building, just communicate that to them so they have that opportunity. But I don't see anything wrong with the dedication being scheduled at a later point. But, you know, communicate with her and see what she thinks.
Yes, ma'am, I will.
Thank you.
Hey, Rose, is your dog okay?
Yeah, she's just fussing.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay. Mr. Mead, I don't have any, I'm sorry, Mr. Mead. President Shanklin, I don't have anything else to share tonight.
Yeah, Steve and I are just brothers from other mothers.
Oh, I remember that from the last time.
Okay, Mr. Walt, Kate Walt.
Yes, Mr. President and board members, my agenda starts on page 271. I am the caboose tonight. And unless you have questions about that, we are done with our agenda.
Chief Cordova, but I think it's a standard report.
Uh-oh. Sorry, chief, I didn't mean to step on your toes.
Right before the caboose.
I like to use Paul for last just because I like his name so much.
Yes, sir. President Shanklin and Dr. Goffney, members of the board, the District Police Department Activity Report begins on page 266 of the agenda, and it's available for your review in case you have any questions.
Doesn't appear that we have any questions, chief.
Thank you.
Dr. Garcia, I take that back.
Well, no, I just wanted to follow up. I just wanted to follow up and see if he'd made any progress on the alarms, alarm question that's still the highest numbers. Making any progress, finding out what's happening?
Yes, ma'am. So the good news is on the alarm system not set category, we've cut that number in half. And that was only with two weeks to work with in the month of July when it was addressed. And the way we did that is we just basically pushed it out to the campus level awareness-type situation, let them know what was going on and the importance of it. So that number has been cut in half within two weeks of July. And so with the entire month of August to work with, I'm sure that those numbers will continue to go down. As far as alarm repairs, we found out that we were actually double-counting some of the alarm repairs. So like, we found out on a weekend that we need to repair alarm, that's one ticket or one call slip. And then when we go out on Monday, that's another one, and they go out on Tuesday to make sure it's still working, it's yet another one. So we might count something as many as three times. So that number has gone down. The number that probably won't go down is the burger alarm. So this is a number of times that we actually go out there to check the alarms. So, you know, we have an aging system with Honeywell that, you know, it has some false readings sometimes, but we still have to go because we don't know when it's the real one.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. That, I saw another hand raised. That's Connie. Connie?
Yes, yes. Let's see. I just have a question. Can you please clarify what this? I'm trying to read my computer over here. Patrol campus check, which is about 1983. What is that? Just from my information, what is that?
So we encourage our officers to not just patrol by the school, but stop at the school and take a look, maybe go inside if appropriate, especially if there's someone, teachers or principal there. Go in and just walk the school. So that's actually their logging when they're making a security check.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we will adjourn into executive session under Section 551071, consultation with attorney, Section 551074, personnel matters, Section 551072, real estate, Section 551076, security personnel or devices, and Section 551082, student disciplinary matters under the Open Meas Act. It is now 10:46 by my clock. And guys, if we'll take five minutes, and let's come back to executive session in about five minutes, say 10:51. We're now going to executive session.